You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabens Street in Fabens, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice-of-the-peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy! In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048. You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Thank you for being here. It's good to see all of you.
Are you ready, Judge?
All ready.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, September 24, 2018. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is the Consent Agenda composed of items 3A through 3U. Are there any items that the members of the Court or the public would like to pull for individual discussion?
Commissioners, any items that you would like pulled? Items that the members of the public would like pulled? Okay, here you now need to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 4A: Approve and Adopt a Resolution Designating September 25, 2018, as National Voter Registration Day in El Paso County, Texas.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioner. Commissioners, I guess, right? I have the honor of reading this resolution. There are some folks from Senator Rodriguez's office, I think. Is Sam here, or is it just you, Sito? Okay, if you want to come up to the podium, I don't know if you want to have...
The senator and I.
If you have something to say.
The senator and I.
I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas National Voter Registration Day is celebrated September 25, 2018 by resolution of the National Association of Secretaries of State, and whereas civic participation is the foundation of our democracy, and our government is stronger when more citizens are engaged in the electoral process, and whereas Texas ranked 44 out of 50 states in voter registration in 2016, and whereas State Senator Jose Rodriguez's Youth Advisory Committee started the Student Voter Initiative in a nonpartisan effort to engage young people in the electoral process, and whereas the initiative has grown and transitioned from the Youth Advisory Committee to a nonpartisan collaboration called Young Voices of El Paso, partners include the El Paso County Elections Department, the YWCA, El Paso Community College, League of Women Voters, and the Center for Civic Engagement at UTEP. Whereas collaborative, nonpartisan effort, Young Voices of El Paso urges all citizens to register to vote or update their registration by October 9, 2018, the voter registration deadline for the November 6th general election. Now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court that Tuesday, September 25, 2018 be recognized as National Voter Registration Day.
Second.
Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll start. Just want to thank everybody for this honor and to the community partners for this project. Very quickly, for those who don't understand or don't know what the Student Voter Initiative is, the idea was that, under state law, high school students are supposed to be given the opportunity to register to vote. And that hasn't always been happening. So we decided to be proactive, the Youth Advisory Committee decided to be proactive, and to do a presentation that got the students talking about why they might want to vote, what policy issues are important to them, and then at the end of that process, at the end of the presentation, pass around voter registration forms and have them vote. So the project, I think, has registered about 4,000 students over the three years that we're doing it. We're very happy to have community partners to take this on. Ultimately, the project should live on outside of the office, and we're looking to make that happen. And if anybody else has words, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Hello, my name is Bolis Soto, I work for the Elections Department, and I just wanted to say thank you to the Court for recognition, the importance of getting the community to register to vote. Every year this program continues to grow. We've already conducted numerous voter registration drives in over 30 schools and have spoken at various principal meetings and organizations regarding voting, and we look forward to continuing the partnership. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. I'm from the Center for Civic Engagement at UTEP, and we're very pleased to be, to take part in this effort that reminds us of our civic duty and our privilege, and that takes part in engaging our youth in a process that ideally turns them into lifelong voters and active citizens. We hope that low voter turnout is a thing of the past, and that instead we become a leader in engaging voters in every election.
Well, thank you all very much, and I can attest personally to how amazing the Student Voter Initiative is, and I've been lucky enough to have been asked to go and participate and go speak to the students and talk to them about the importance of voting. And if any of us, if any of you all would like to get yourselves involved...
I'd love that.
I think it would be great, because the kids really enjoy the opportunity to interact with elected officials. Even though many of them may not know who we are, I think they take a lot away from the experience, and that's why you've seen so many of them register to vote. And I think we've also seen an increase in folks that actually have been voting. And so I really appreciate all the work that our Elections Department does as well. I think that the outreach that you all have been doing under Lisa Wise's administration there has really changed things. And of course, at UTEP, it's great to have folks out there trying to reach out to the young people in this community at the university level, not just at high school level, to get them registered to vote and show them the importance of using their voice. So thank you all very much for what you do.
And I appreciate too, all the great work from our Elections Department, from our Senator's Office, and a quick plug, when I was in college, I actually worked at the Center for Civic Engagement with Jennifer and Asudi, and they do a wonderful job of promoting the really good things that are happening on campus and in our community, and voting was one of those items. And so I think now more so than ever, regardless of who you vote for or what party you might or may not affiliate with, people need to be registered to vote, because this is the most important time for us to be vocal about what it is and the direction that we want our country to be heading in. Again, regardless of who you think might be the best candidate, and so really appreciate your work around this really important issue. So thank you very much. Round of applause, please.
Item 4B: Approve and Adopt a Resolution Opposing the Construction of a Border Wall in the Chihuahua neighborhood of El Paso in El Paso County, Texas.
Good morning. Again, I also have the honor of reading this resolution. I know that we have some folks from the Border Network for Human Rights out here. I see Dylan Corbett from the Border Hope Institute, and I don't know if there's anybody else who, among the organizations, that requested me to, that I do this resolution, but if y'all would like to come up to the podium and I'll read it, and then we can hear from y'all. But I will go ahead and start. Whereas the United States has long positioned itself in the world as a beacon of freedom and human rights reflected in the words engraved at the base of the Statue of Liberty. Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free. Send these, the homeless, tempestas to me. And whereas the United States, the state of Texas, and the County of El Paso have long been enriched by and are committed to welcome immigrant families and communities who come to our country seeking better lives and enrich all of us with their presence and contributions. And whereas the announcement of the construction of a new border wall in central El Paso needlessly causes further separation of our binational community and puts the lives and well-being of migrants and border residents alike at risk. And whereas this new wall construction is a symbol of hate aimed towards our friends, allies, trading partners, and families in Mexico. And whereas the proposed border wall will add to our federal deficit and divert critical resources from needed improvements in our national, state, and local infrastructure, while our ports of entry, which promote travel, tourism, and the interdiction of illegal drugs, have billions of dollars in unmet infrastructure needs. And whereas the creation of the wall in the Chihuahua neighborhood is especially disturbing to our communities' people and communities of faith, because it disturbs and disrupts the sacred ground where the border mass has traditionally been celebrated with participants from both sides of the border, and where the Hugs Not Walls event to reunify separated families has been regularly conducted over the last two years. And whereas we cannot allow our opposition to the recent uprising of xenophobia and inhumanity to be suppressed, or our resistance to the separation of immigrant families to be quashed. And whereas, in contrast to the wall, the Paso del Norte region is America's new Ellis Island, a beacon of hope and humanity to the world. Now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court that our community and the communities of the Paso del Norte region call on the federal government to adopt policies that advance hugs through the reunification of immigrant families, decriminalization of migration, the demilitarization of our border, and the facilitation of trade, commerce, and exchange instead of walls.
Second.
Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout? Corruption. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
I have a belief that we do not tell other entities what to do, and for that reason and for that reason only, I vote no.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you all so much for being here this morning. We do have several individuals signed up to speak on this item. Did you want to go ahead and accept the resolution portion, and we'll invite our guest to speak?
Yes, absolutely. My name is Marissa Limon. I'm with the Hope Border Institute, also partner of the Borderline Immigration Council, and a friend of the Border Network for Human Rights. And thank you for taking a bold step where a lot of others would not. This is not what El Paso is. For so long, our community has been a testing ground, a punching bag, an area where folks think that we can just let things go that don't understand the border reality. And so thank you for taking this bold step. We look forward to working with you and with our counterparts, the city, to hopefully really create space so that our communities continue to thrive together instead of being forcibly separated.
Thank you for being here. And I'm going to go ahead and take the individuals who signed up to speak as they were handed to me. So I'll ask Mr. Fernando Garcia with the Border Network for Human Rights to go first, unless you'd like to go last, Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Okay. Gabriela Castañeda, Border Network for Human Rights. Good morning.
Good morning. It's an honor for me to be here. Thank you very much for writing this resolution. We don't know if you guys are going to vote to pass it yet, but let me tell you something that even though this is symbolic, this is very important for the immigrant communities out there that are suffering right now with every tweet from the president that causes terror. We have had the Hugs Not Walls event in that site for the last 26 months, and I've been in charge of registering each and every one of the families that are participating in this event, so I know their stories. And right now, we have a family, it's a man that has a terminal illness. He's got cancer, and he's got two months to live. And he went to the office and wanted to register to participate in this event because he wants to say goodbye to his son that he has not seen in several years. The building of this wall is not only unnecessary, it's a clear attempt to attack this event that the Border Network for Human Rights has been having, and it's a humanitarian event. All they want to do is hug and embrace for a few minutes, and the construction of the wall in that area will stop this event from happening again. We need to understand that we don't need a border wall to be safe. We are safe, and it's not because of the wall, it's because of the interaction between border residents and the law enforcement agencies. We have had a dialogue with Border Patrol for so many years. It's been over a decade, and it wasn't easy to bring them to the table, and it wasn't easy to take them to the communities and talk to the people and let them know that they were not enemies, that they were friends, that they were trying to do a job, a job that they've been doing. But we need them to understand that they had agreed to have this event since last year. They cannot back up from what they had decided already. We need to continue having this event because of the conditions that we are having right now with an administration that is attacking immigrants every single day. It's, for us, this resolution means sending a welcoming message to them and telling them, we are on your side, we know that all you want to do is work to give a better life to your family, so thank you so much for writing this resolution.
Thank you for being here this morning. We have Dulce Carlos, is that correct?
Good morning.
Buenos dias. Soy este Dulce Carlos, promotora de la Red Fronteriza por los Derechos Humanos, y esta mañana estamos aquí pues en protesta este al la construcción del muro.
Fernando, Fernando, do you want to translate? Okay.
So my name is Dulce Carlos, and I'm a human rights promoter of the Border Network for Human Rights, and right now, we are here this morning protesting the construction of the border wall.
Porque este muro separa nuestras familias, y yo pienso que la ciudad del paso lo ha dicho el Beto O'Rourke en varias ocasiones, es una de las ciudades más seguras, y la ciudad no necesita este un muro para ser más seguro.
Because the wall separates families, and as Beto O'Rourke has mentioned several times, we have one of the safest cities of its size in the nation, so we don't need a wall to keep us safe.
Muchas gracias por estar aquí esta mañana.
Thank you.
Claudia Diaz?
Buenos dias. Buenos dias. Soy Claudia Diaz, de la Red Fronteriza por los Derechos Humanos, y pues estamos aquí agradeciéndoles esta resolución en la que estamos presentando hoy, pues porque sabemos que este muro, verdad, no viene a resolver nada, nada migratoriamente. Sabemos que el sistema migratorio está roto, necesitamos reformar este sistema pero de otra forma.
My name is Claudia Diaz, and I work for the Border Network for Human Rights, and I'm here thanking you for writing this resolution, because this wall doesn't come to resolve anything in terms of the immigration. We need, we know that we have a broken immigration system that needs to be addressed, but this is not the right way to do it.
Este evento que estamos haciendo nosotros desde hace algunos meses de abrazos no muros viene a reforzar la petición de nuestras comunidades. Nosotros no necesitamos muros, necesitamos abrazos, necesitamos que se nos reconozca como seres humanos aquí dentro de los Estados Unidos.
The event that we've been having for several months comes to enforce the idea of the communities that we don't need walls, we need hugs, and that's the petition that our communities have been making to us for a long time.
Y tenemos que reconocer que igual que las 13 colonias que se formaron al principio de los Estados Unidos, somos seres humanos todos. Aquellos y los de ahorita somos seres humanos con respeto, con dignidad, y con igualdad.
And we need to remember and recognize the 13 colonies that were formed in the beginning of the history of this country. We are the same migrants that arrived a long time ago, and we need to be recognized with dignity and rights.
Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias. Que tenga un día. Cecilia Rueda?
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es María Rueda. Soy promotora de los Derechos Humanos de la Red Fronteriza, y les damos gracias por invitarnos a esta resolución. Igual queremos abrazos, no más muros, no más separaciones de familias. Que nos traten como seres humanos con igualdad a todos que vivimos en este país. Muchas gracias.
My name is María Rueda. I'm a human rights promoter of the Border Network for Human Rights, and I'm here to thank you for writing this resolution and to tell you that we need hugs, not walls, and we need to be treated with dignity and respect, and we just need to be treated as human beings. Thank you.
Thank you. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Mr. Garcia? Thank you for being here.
Thank you. No se vayan. By the way, Commissioners, Judge, thanks for, Commissioner Stout putting together this important resolution. I was going to start saying that this is a very sad day, but it's been too many sad days lately in terms of the impact of this administration's policies in our border community. It's been said in the past, and even today, that whatever is federal, it's just there at the federal level, you know, this is an example, a clear example of how federal decisions are impacting a local community like never before. And what is at risk here is not only the construction of a very expensive four-mile wall in downtown El Paso, it's the most historic district of our border community, a wall that is going to cost $20 million, just to start with. Everybody has said, and I guess you agree already by passing the resolution, that walls are not the solution to a very complex phenomenon that is the issue of immigration. We had said many times that in this court, actually had agreed, that we need comprehensive immigration reform. We need to recognize that immigrants are an asset to our community. We need to recognize that the United States has welcomed immigrants historically, that immigrants build this country. But this administration and these policies are actually going against that. I mean, they want to destroy the idea that immigrants are an asset. I mean, they are promoting a narrative that immigrants are a threat and that we need to justify the construction of border walls. I think what is at risk in our community, I think it is important to understand it in terms of the larger context, which is the way that this construction, or the way that they announced the construction of the wall, it is putting at risk the relation between communities and Border Patrol and other federal agencies. We had worked hard for more than 15 years to have a substantive engagement, a respectful engagement between communities and federal immigration agencies, especially Border Patrol. The announcement, where they didn't consult a single body, not you, not the city, not federal agents, federal elected officials, no community, no organization was consulted about the impact of this border wall, and specifically, the way that they dismissed the commitment that they had with hugs not walls, the way that they just want to crush a symbol of resistance of immigrant families, that the way that they just simply told us that they would not allow the permit for hugs not walls, I think that was extremely disrespectful. So we commend the Commissioners for passing this resolution. I think I wanted to announce it, I wanted to say very clearly that hugs not walls on October the 13th, it will happen. Thousands of families, we have registered more than 300 families, 200 families, sorry, we will be there to actually have the event of hugs not walls. So thank you, Commissioners, thank you, Judge, for passing this resolution, and hopefully we can also get a picture.
And before we, before we head down, I wanted to say, if you have not participated in a hugs not walls event, I had the honor of being there at the last event. It is absolutely incredible, and it's this display of humanity that during this time in our country, we probably need a lot more of than trying to divide us. And so I appreciate all the work that you've been doing, and I'm happy for us to head down.
You know, I mean, you know, one thing I want to say is that, you know, I've opposed the wall, and you know, we have a lot of ugly things that are happening here in our community, but you know, it's very difficult, you know, we have a double narrative here in the community. And while, you know, I know there was a line in the resolution that refers to our community as the Ellis Island of El Paso, or the Ellis Island of America, but the reality is that we detain, we are the immigration detention capital of America. Make no mistake about it, we detain far more immigrants than any other community in the country. We collect more revenue off the detention of immigrants, and you know, I just, you know, as we talk about the problem of immigration, we need to, you know, we need to confront that reality because I think it's something that over time needs to change. But you know, when you look at what's happening in Torneo, that facility's now been tripled in size. The federal government, I believe, is spending $200 million a month to operate that facility, but many parents of those children are being housed at our facility. And you know, I wonder how many parents still have not been united with their children, and that's a reality that we still continue to confront. So as we talk about this issue, you know, I think that's part of the challenge, is that, you know, we can refer to ourselves as the Ellis Island of America, but I don't think we're going to really truly get there if we don't actually be truthful about the realities that we face.
Should we take the picture? Sure.
Item number five, public comment.
I don't believe that we have anybody signed up for public comment, but before we leave this item, I would like to wish our very own Commissioner Leon a very happy birthday today. I know he does not like the attention, but happy birthday, Commissioner, nonetheless. So we won't sing necessarily, but happy birthday.
Thank you very much. You're too kind. I'm 67, and I tell you what, I'm proud of every one of those days, except a few. Thank you.
And then just a moment of personal privilege, was not expecting this, but, and I'm not sure quite why they're here, but my parents are sitting in the audience, since I'd like to recognize my mom and dad who are visiting the courthouse today. I have no idea what I, I think they're just witnessing county government in action. Yeah. Okay, I believe that's it for public comment.
Item 6A, presentation. Receive a presentation to recognize the contributions made by individuals and organizations which assisted in making our eighth annual employee appreciation picnic possible.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. At this time before I begin, if I could have everyone who is here on behalf of this item, please come up as well. Understand there may be a large group. IT, Parks?
Well, everyone in the audience is here for the employee picnic.
They're all here for this great item. So again, good morning, Judging Commissioners, Melissa Carillo with Human Resources. And this morning, I have the great honor of being able to share with you just a recap and a presentation of all that goes into making our picnic possible. It doesn't go with the expense of any taxpayer dollars, it goes solely on the basis of contributions financially from people, but as well as donors from local businesses in the Sports Commission. And so we have a short presentation, and then Alexis is going to play a quick video for us all. So just a history, this picnic, it was our eighth annual. Two weeks ago, we had it on September the 15th. We've been doing this at Ascari Park, and the purpose of us doing this is truly to honor and recognize employees for their hard work, their dedication, and their loyalty to this great county. It's the big event, it's the only event we get to do to recognize them all, and so it's something that has really picked up in pace. The funding for the event, a large portion of the funding truly comes from a donation from the El Paso Sports Commission, and they're here with us today. We also received donations from department heads and elected officials, and from the revenue of our county prescription card program, which we earmark those funds for employee relations each year that we receive those royalties. Each year, the attendance ranges a little over 800 employees and their families per year, and so we're grateful to be able to have them with us. And again, like I said, local businesses for raffles. This screen highlights those monetary donations that were received by department heads and elected officials, and for those of you that are in the audience and those that are watching, a big thank you for all that you do to support us. We really could not do it without your support. We appreciate it. These are some of the local businesses that were able to donate some raffle prizes. Some of our contracted vendors contributed some prizes, Ardevino's, Baragans, Cattlemen's, I Painted That, Menche's, Peter Piper Pizza, Sam's Club, The Stage Salon, and Witch Witch Superior Sandwiches. Other cards were purchased with donations by department heads via the county of El Paso. Our picnic committee, this is the team of people that come together starting in May and start planning in the details of what the picnic will look like once it comes to fruition. In HR, this entire event is led by Janet Sanchez, our chair, and she's with us today. We could not do this without her, her amazing passion that she has for us. It becomes stressful at times, but she loves every minute of what she does. Our team, Angelica Sanchez, Richard Blancas, Andrew Gers, Sukey Gomez, and Martha Sosa, they team up with employees of different departments. Ms. Tessa Jimenez and her amazing team in Parks and Recreation really came to the table this year. We didn't use Parks and Rec as we should have in the past, and this year, putting our heads together really helped to make the picnic so much better, and so we're grateful to Tessa and her team. Cassandra Delgado with Economic Development, and Hopeden from the Fleet Department. So this is the committee who starts putting the ideas together. The events, they changed this year, we've expanded, and you can see that the typical events include volleyball, our famous tug-of-war, which we have some pictures and videos coming up about that. Commissioner Hagerty was on the winning team. Golf, basketball, and flag football were both new. I was able to witness flag football, and it was amazing to see the great talent, males and females alike, really competing and doing some great work. Activities were swimming, jumping balloons, game center. We were able to use and highlight our lake by showcasing them via the paddle boats, which was a fun event, and we had archery as well, and I understand there was some competition there as well.
Not important who won that one.
So to conclude on the picnic champions, every time we do this, we have traveling trophies, and they literally go from office to office, and the office gets bragging rights for a year, and HR will go collect those trophies right before this new picnic begins. In golf, I believe this is their third consecutive year winning, but it's Los Bamberos from the Fleet Department. They literally have golf shoes that are their work boots, and they put the spikes on the bottom, and so they're very talented and very deserving of this award. Volleyball went to the crew representing District Attorney's Office. Basketball were the Sports Park Ballers from Sports Park. Tug-of-war went to the Super Nerds, consisting of many members of IT as well as Commissioner Hagerty, and flag football, which was Team Unisex, represented JP Five. So these are your winners, and their trophies will be delivered soon. But again, we could not do this. A huge thank you needs to go to the Sports Commission, and I'm grateful that he's here. Mr. Brian Kennedy, together with Bo Bagley and Rick Park, they're also here, and I just really want to thank them because while we connect, while we collect donations and monetary donations from electeds and department head, the majority of our cost is absolutely the food and drink. And this year, the Sports Commission was able to sponsor that for us, and they were able to get us Rudy's Barbecue. It was amazing, it was a hit, and it was very well organized. We minimized the lines. In years past, we hear from the employees, "It takes too long to get our food." That wasn't an issue this year. And so, Mr. Kennedy and team, I'd really like to thank you for all that you do for our employees. And again, just a big thank you to picnic committee, the HR team, Parks and Rec, ITD, Alexis, wherever you are in your dark room, thank you for walking around and taking all those pictures. He hits his steps for all of us because he ensured that he was at every event, so I'm very grateful to the work you do, Alexis. Jose Quinones and Hopeden Staple and Artuan Barnes, thank you so much for all that you do to lead and score and ensure the rules were followed. Andy Chavez from Purchasing, he was a referee on our flag football team, he did great. And again, Rudy's Texas Barbecue and staff. So a big thank you, it was a great success, we can't wait for next year. Before we shake your hands, we'd really like to show you a quick 30-second video. And thank you again, Alexis, for putting that video together on such short notice. So again, Judge, Commissioners, thank you for your support and recognition of our employees. They love working for you, and we appreciate you being able to support this picnic in honor of them.
And we appreciate all of the incredible work. When we started this eight years ago with HR and the Sports Commission right next to us ensuring that we could execute this because it was such a big task, it was a lot of work, but the employees have really come to anticipate and expect this event. I think everyone really looks forward to it, especially those that are extremely competitive. I won't mention some members of the court, but...
Black and skill, I make that four in eagerness.
But I do appreciate that HR has been so willing to pick this up, take it on, continue the tradition, and that we've continued with the great partnerships that we forged with the Sports Commission and with all the departments and others who have been so instrumental in making this happen for our employees. So, yeah.
Judge, Commissioners, I've got to say, thank you. This only highlights the high energy and the excitement that our employees have in what they do here for the county. And I've got to say that over these last few weeks, who's Janet? She would call the office Janet Nizis, Janet Nizah. Who is this Janet? Thank you for that high energy and what was accomplished. And I've got to say again, echo the judge's words, that Brian Kennedy and your staff, I mean, you've got an attitude of how can we make it yes, instead of no, no, we can't do that. It's always yes, and it doesn't go without notice. So thank you all for such a great job. Thank you.
Judge?
Yes, sir.
I just want a giant thank you to HR, Parks, Hopeden. It's an employee picnic, but they spend more time running around, working than actually enjoying themselves. And it's an event that my family looks forward to every year. It's just a great time. And I want to take this time to personally apologize to anyone I offended in my competitiveness. I might have gone too far a couple times, and if I did, I apologize, but I won't change. It's who I am. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Item 6B, receive a presentation from El Paso County
Receive a presentation from the El Paso County Historical Commission regarding their quarterly report from April through June 2018.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioners, Jose Quinones with Economic Development. I have with me here members of the El Paso County Historical Commission to present to you their quarterly report.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, good morning, Judge. My name is Janine Young, and I'm the chairperson of the El Paso County Historical Commission, and with me today is Nancy Gonzalez, a fellow commissioner, who is the chairperson of the Finance Committee of the EPCHC. Also scheduled to be with us today, but unable to be here this morning, was Georgina Perez, who served as the chairperson of the Ad Hoc Bylaws Committee, but she did provide us a report to give you today about bylaws. This report is for the second quarter, April, May, June. We had two meetings during this quarter, April, May, we did not have a meeting in June. Both commission meetings made quorum. Seven of the nine standing committees conducted meetings during this quarter. Again, we have nine other committees, and seven of them met. Complete information concerning our minutes and our reports, our attachments to the agendas and are available online if you'd like more information.
The commission's main focus during these three months were revision of bylaws, which will be presented shortly. We have historical marker, new applications, and planning of dedication ceremonies, and we also established a special committee for the Oñate Crossing Harts Mill Old Fort Bliss site. And also, our next dedication ceremony will be at Bailey Cemetery, October 13th, at Ten Aym in Canutillo, Texas, and you all, please, everyone is welcome to join us.
In April, we met on April 10th, 15 commissioners were present out of 25. The commission received reports from five committees, administration, archaeology, finance, markers, and outreach. The main focus of the April meeting was an update from county staff, from Jose and Valerie, on a proposed contract for an architectural survey of the county. They gave us an update on the status of that contract, the proposed contract, and we also received information from the county attorney's staff, I'm sorry, from the county attorney concerning issuing an RFP for historical research for marker applications. One of our challenges is to get volunteers to do the research for historical markers, professional researchers, historians, most of them professors, and so it was proposed to us by Lee Chapley, that we could create a vendor list of those, and so she directed us on how we could do that, and we'll be working on that in the next several months so that we'd have a ready list of people that could be put under contract to do historical research if members of the markers committee themselves could not do a specific type of research or all the research that we need done. We've also publicized this need for researchers in the community. We have publicized it at UTEP through the History Department, we publicized it through the El Paso History Radio Show, and so far, we've received one volunteer to help us with a local marker, and he helped us with the Isleta Elementary School marker. So we think this would be a good way to get more marker applications completed by getting more people in the community, whether they're on the Historical Commission or not, involved in that research. And then in May, we met on May 8th with 15 commissioners present, we received reports from administration, archaeology, finance, outreach, publicity, and the new committee, Oñate's Crossing Committee. At the May meeting, we approved the revised bylaws, and we approved our budgetary request to Jose Quinones, which will be passed on to you for fiscal year 2019. And we also received information from Jose and Valerie on the county's work on Casa Roque, and an update on that work. And as far as the bylaws, we did approve those, as I said, on May 8th. Georgina Perez served as the chairperson of that committee, and the reason for revising the bylaws, what the need was, was to bring our commission into compliance with county regulations and procedures. Our existing bylaws were outdated, and they did not reflect county policies and regulations. So the main revisions were changes to officers, we only have two officers now, which is a chair and a vice chair. We have new committees and some changes on our committees, so that was incorporated in the revised bylaws. And just, we set a schedule for our monthly meetings, which is the second Tuesday of every month, so we needed that to be reflected in the bylaws.
And just a summary of the creation of Oñate Crossing Harts Mill Old Fort Bliss Committee. It consists of both commissioners, non-commissioners, and the National Park Service employees. We meet every other month, we've met June, August, and we're scheduled for October 2nd for our third meeting. The committee created a summary report on the status of the work on proposal for the Oñate Crossing Harts Mill Old Fort Bliss site, and that is in progress. And we set a timeline to finish the work on the 2012 proposal for the Oñate Crossing Harts Mill Old Fort Bliss site.
I should say, this is the worst made.
Yeah, it's long.
So, we'll just say the site.
And so right now, currently, the cultural landscape and the historical survey are in progress, and National Park Service is paying for that. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I think the county also has a received grant for that work as well.
Yeah, and so we want to identify other sites along the Camino Real that need to be coordinated with this site that we created for the special committee, and we're looking at possible sites in the lower valley, along the Camino Real. We are also looking to design a plan for securing funds to complete proposed work on the Oñate Crossing Committee, and MPS is working with Amatera, and that's a consulting firm, to secure funds for this, and this will be part of the funds secured for the archaeological survey as well. And we completed a PowerPoint presentation about the site project to present to stakeholders and potential funders, and we're looking at UTEP, the County of El Paso, and private entities for potential funders for these three sites, which again are Oñate's Crossing, Harts Mill, and Old Fort Bliss. We want to preserve them, so, and they're right now owned by private entities, so we'd like to find buyers that will help preserve these buildings for us. And we also reviewed and updated the inventory of historic assets in El Paso County, and that's what we want to do. And right now, we know that there are numerous trost buildings throughout El Paso County, so we want to identify those.
And I should say, on this committee, there's co-chairs, Historical Commissioner John Hamilton is a chair, and the other chair is Gary Williams from the El Paso Community Foundation. So we have a lot of plans for this committee going forward. Right now, the main priority is to begin to give presentation, the presentation we created, to different stakeholders about our plans for the site, and then begin to discuss how can we partner with some private landowners as well as private agencies like the Community Foundation perhaps, to secure some other grant funds for the site as well. And of course, there's already a partnership between the county and the National Park Service for the work being conducted on the site, so we'll keep you updated on that. It's an exciting thing, and probably, you know, one of the most significant accomplishments we've done this year is just getting this committee up and going.
And so basically, the markers committee is the most important committee of the El Paso County Historical Commission, and we meet monthly. We completed work during the second quarter that included the creation of a master list of markers to be submitted over the next five years, and we are updating the inventory of historical markers in the county. And right now, Texas Historical Commission, their current topics are World War I, sports, and women, so we're working to hopefully get these three topics of markers placed in throughout El Paso County. And we've submitted, we're planning to submit three to five new applications this year for the new historical markers, three to five applications for replacement of damaged or missing markers, and replacement of markers with outdated texts. And just for your information, the Old Fort Bliss building, the markers that were there have been ripped off, they've been stolen, so we're working on replacing those markers as well. And so.
Thank you again for allowing us to be here, and if you have any questions, if not, we'll, again, thank you.
Commissioners, any questions? I want to appreciate all of the great work you've been doing. This is one of the most active committees, commissions, boards that the county has, and we appreciate all of the time and the effort and energy that goes into, you mentioned the markers is probably one of the more vibrant committees, but we really rely on you all to help us when we think about our historic assets, and that's something that the court has been very clear in wanting to preserve and move forward in the work that we're doing through our strategic plan, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. And so I believe this would be a motion to accept, do we have to make a motion, Ms. Sanchez? No, it's just a presentation today, right?
It's just a presentation.
Okay.
Item number seven, Commissioners' Court. Discuss and take appropriate action to support, oppose, or indicate no opposition to the City of El Paso's application to the U.S. Foreign Trade Zones Board on behalf of Woodbridge Group and Broker's Logistics to modify the current list of properties located inside the Foreign Trade Zone Number 68.
Good morning.
Good morning, Your Honor, Commissioners. David Panko, manager for the Foreign Trade Zone.
I was wondering, sir, if you could give us some perspective. Commissioners, we have these items come up before the court for our consideration about once a year, but wanted to have Mr. Panko here to provide some perspective as to the change that's being made, why these two are being proposed, and then if you could also give some context, I was looking at the backup, when we're adding one, we're removing one, it seems like.
Sure.
And what that means.
Sure. The boundaries are virtual boundaries that are set for the Foreign Trade Zone where companies can operate the Foreign Trade Zone Program. It's a program that's managed through the Department of U.S. Commerce, and the City of El Paso has been made a grantee for the Foreign Trade Zone Program here in El Paso. So there's about 3,500 acres that have been designated over the years as these virtual boundaries where a Foreign Trade Zone Program can be run inside these boundaries. Occasionally, we find a business that wants to enter into the Foreign Trade Zone Program, and the virtual boundaries are not around their property. So in order to alleviate that, there's a process called a minor boundary modification, and so we have to swap one parcel for another, we have to swap acreage for acreage. And so we look at where are we today versus when they were planning these boundaries 10, 15 years ago, and say, okay, where do we believe that a current boundary that exists, there won't be any industrial development in that area, and let's move that boundary to a company that actually needs the program today. So there's two boundary modifications that we need to make, and one of them is for a company that does manufacturing in northeast El Paso, and they've got a 25-acre lot where they have a large building, they have a large empty space in the building, and they're going to bring some manufacturing in and create about 30, 40 more jobs, but they need to be able to do this in the Foreign Trade Zone Program. And so we located a plot of land, it's just south of the SAC, the SAC Center, where there won't be any industrial development, so we want to swap those two pieces of land and say, let's move the boundary from here to here so that we can bring this company into the Foreign Trade Zone Program. The other company is a logistics company located over on Hawkins, and they want to enter into the Foreign Trade Zone Program to, so they can become more competitive and also increase some more jobs in our community. And we've looked at a plot of land that's currently farmland, way down in the 12,000 block of Alameda, and we want to swap those two parcels so that we move the boundary from down there over to where it can be used today. And so in order to do this, we have to apply to the Foreign Trade Zones Board, which is part of the Department of Commerce, this minor boundary modification application, and all tax and entities have to support this modification in order to make it happen. So we're here today to request your support and approval for this change.
Any questions, Commissioners? No? Okay. I think we have the option to support, oppose, or indicate no opposition, and so I would make a motion to support the two proposed changes.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good afternoon. Thank you for being here.
Item number eight. Discuss and take appropriate action per Local Government Code 81.005, Terms of Court Meetings A. At the last regular term of each fiscal year of the county, the Commissioners' Court, by order, shall designate a day of the week on which the court shall convene in a regular term each month during the next fiscal year.
Commissioners, this is a regular item that comes before the court's consideration every year before we start the next fiscal year, and that is to determine when the court will be meeting on a monthly basis, whether it be weekly, whether it be on a Monday, and what time the meetings are held. I believe there might be a motion to meet maybe every other month, and so, I kid, but it's been the practice of the court to maintain the same schedule, which is every Monday minus holidays at 9:30 a.m., and so if there is...
Caesar didn't like my Saturday idea.
If there's no opposition or any discussion, we can maintain that same schedule. Is that okay with everybody? Okay. I'd make a motion to continue the same schedule, which is meeting on Mondays at 9:00 a.m.
9:30.
9:30 a.m., I apologize. Given no holidays, it might interfere with that timeframe. And so, Ms. Sanchez, is it a motion to maintain the same schedule?
Maintain the same schedule, and that will note, at least in the records, that it'll be 9:30 on Mondays, exceptions of holidays.
Okay.
And any other, you know, if you cancel or not, but you take those up when you do.
So moved?
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Couldn't Saturday.
You'd be the only one here.
Item number nine, Judiciary and Corrections. Approve and authorize the county judge to accept the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division Specialty Court Program Grant Award for fiscal year 2019 for the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in the amount of $130,242 from September 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2019. Further, authorize the county judge to sign the resolution as a condition of the grant award, contract number 2018-0638.
Good morning.
Good morning, County Judge, County Commissioner Sylvia Senna for the Veterans Treatment Court, and yes, we finally got notice, we got our grant. So this governor's grant is going to cover the full-time position of the compliance officer and a part-time position of a specialty court liaison. So on behalf of Judge Burrell and Judge Moody, we're requesting that you please accept the grant and the resolution.
Move to approve.
Oh, I'll second.
Come on!
James, you owe me a coke.
You figure out how you want to start.
Commissioner Hagerty made the motions second by Commissioner Stout.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much, and I would be remiss if I didn't remind you about our graduation this Wednesday. We have Colonel Sean McGary, our Garrison Commander from Fort Bliss, who will be our speaker, so I hope you all can make it.
That's at 3:00 or 4:00?
It's at 3:30, Commissioner, so we're hoping that you all can make it. All right. Thank you so much.
To tell you, in working with our partners at Fort Bliss, I heard nothing but great things in what the court is doing, so really appreciate all the great work.
Thank you for that, Judge. I'll leave Judge Burrell now, thank you so much, you all have a good one, thank you.
You too, have a good afternoon.
Item number 10. Litigation, Justice, and Law Enforcement. Approve and authorize the county judge to accept the Texas Indigent and Defense Commission Statement of Grant Award fiscal year 2018, Technical Support Grant Number 18 TS 08, in the amount of $70,000 with a county match of $90,000. Funding is available in General Fund, General Admin, Operations, Contingencies, contract number 2018-0660.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Joel Bishop, Executive Director of Justice and Community Services, County Administration. I strongly support this grant opportunity, I think it's a great opportunity from TIDC. We invest a tremendous amount into our indigent defense system, our Public Defender's Office, and this is a great opportunity to do what I believe is a first empirical evaluation of this process. We have had audits, but to actually do an empirical analysis, expanding our recidivism study is a great opportunity, so I would ask that you accept this. Thank you.
So the study would help us out to understand the effectiveness of the Public Defender's Office, can you explain a little bit?
Yeah, it's not just the Public Defender's Office, although that's included, but it'd be the whole indigent defense system and processes. So it's going to analyze things like time in jail and relating that to outcomes, recidivism, expanding off the recidivism, and see if the indigent defense are treated equally as those who get out more quickly, and evaluate the outcomes of the office overall, particularly as it relates to recidivism, but also case outcomes, guilty... as it relates to recidivism, but also case outcomes, guilty pleas, and other things. And another advantage of this is we can, El Paso can help drive how this is evaluated, which is part of this process, so that it can be used as a model for other communities. And TIDC was very interested in El Paso because of the long history of our Public Defender's Office and the potential that we have to make, be a model for other communities in Texas.
Judge, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Gabby Federal from the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. I just, during, while we were getting the budget prepared for this and speaking with Mr. Bishop, we weren't sure exactly how the contribution was going to happen, so I just wanted to clarify that now that we know it is a grant, the funding will be made, we will have some transfers that will take place to properly code this as a grant. This was also something that was approved with the FY19 budget, so we will make those transfers at the start of the new fiscal year.
So it was a part of the FY19 budget?
It was, yes. And it was reserved under contingencies, as I mentioned, because we weren't sure if, how the contribution was going to take place, but now that we know it is a match, it would have, it would have been under the match contingencies.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioners?
Moved to approve. Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon? Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item number 11, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Extended Warranty and Support Services Agreement on behalf of the El Paso County Juvenile Probation Department with BI Incorporated for Electronic Monitoring Services from October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019 in the amount of $66,967. Funding is available in Special Revenue, JPD, Support Contract Services, General, contract number 2018-0408.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Victor Pinam. I'm the Field Compliance Committee Improvement Supervisor at the Juvenile Probation Department. We bring before you the contract with BI Incorporated. It is currently our provider for our electronic monitoring equipment at the department. There at the Juvenile Probation Department, you know, I have with me Robert Diaz, who is our electronic monitor technician as well.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Any questions, Commissioners, on this item? No?
Can you describe the system just for us, for the folks listening in the public?
Yes, sir. Pretty much, right now, the department has 32 GPS Global Positioning System monitors that we currently have at the department, and we have 96, yes, Home Guard, which is landline-based electronic monitoring systems. The electronic monitors directly affect our detention population, so with that, we use a large majority of our GPS units to directly affect those juveniles that are currently detained in our facility, and from there, everything else is with our probation team that we use as well to monitor and keep our juveniles monitored by our probation officers there at the department, sir.
So what that means in effect is, instead of having to house some of these folks, they're allowed to go home, but there's some certain monitoring conditions that must be met. Is that correct?
Sir, yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good afternoon.
Item number 12, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the agreement between El Paso County on behalf of the El Paso County Juvenile Probation Department and Communities in School for the Texas Juvenile Justice Department Prevention and Intervention Grants, Grants S&amp;T for the 2018 through 2019 biennium with Communities in School for the term beginning September 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2019 in an amount not to exceed $79,277. Funding is available in TJJD Prevention and Intervention Demonstration Project Grant 2019, GTJJD S 2019, and TJJD Prevention and Intervention Project School Attendance Improvement Grant 2019, GTJJDT 2019, contract number 2018-0469.
Morning.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jamil Livas, and I am the Deferred Prosecution Senior Officer at the Juvenile Probation Department, and today, JPD requests approval of the contract with CIS as currently before you. This partnership began in 2014 and aims to reduce truancies and prevent delinquency to at-risk youth. Program is involved to fund two case managers, provide enhanced home-based services to the target population at Riverside Middle School and Parkland Middle School. Program providers services to a minimum of 50 youth per year, and outcomes since partnership has been in existence have been very good. This past fiscal year, 58 new enrollments were served, and of those, only two youth penetrated the juvenile justice system. Partnership with YSD is greatly responsible for the success we encounter with this program as activities rely greatly on the school support of prevention programming. Any questions?
Commissioners? Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your support. Good afternoon. Thank you.
Item number 13, approve and authorize the county judge to accept the Statement of Grant Award from the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for the El Paso County Juvenile Drug Court Program, Grant Number 1802814 in the amount of $92,604.71 from September 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2019. Accounting match is not required, contract number 2018-0627.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, my name is Rosie Medina, Director of Special Programs at the Juvenile Probation Department, and today we are before you requesting your approval to accept a grant from the governor's office to continue our program and operations of our juvenile drug court here in our county.
Is this the challenge program?
No, this is for our juvenile drug court.
Okay.
Yes. I'm not too sure if you all recall, but our juvenile drug court, we are in our 14th year of operation. Judge Sam Medrano from the 409th District Court is our presiding judge over that specialty court, and just recently, we were designated a mentor court for our country. And to share with you also, we're really excited, we were, they reached out to us from the State Department, and both, not both of us, but three of us, myself, Judge Medrano, and one of our defense attorneys will be traveling to Peru tomorrow to train the Peruvian government on how to design and implement a drug court. And we're very honored that we're representing El Paso County as we are three of six national presenters to train the Peruvian government. So I think that says a lot about the work and the dedication and the support that you all provide to us, as well as the leadership at JPD for the operation of our program.
Moved to approve.
That says a lot. When the government of Peru reaches out to El Paso, Texas to receive special training in a certain area, it says a lot about what's going on in JPD.
Yes, we have amazing leadership.
Thank you. Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 14, approve and authorize the county judge to accept the Statement of Grant Award from the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division for the El Paso County Juvenile Probation Department's Project Hope Juvenile Mental Health Court Services, Grant Number 2576507 from September 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2018 in the amount of $115,930.16. Accounting match is not required, contract number 2018-0628.
Once again, this is another grant to fund the operations of our mental health court that is presided by Judge Terry Ligon, who is one of our juvenile court referees there at JPD.
Motion to approve? Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Item number 15, approve and authorize the county judge to accept a supplemental Statement of Grant Award Number Two to the Sustaining Special Response Teams and First Responder Capabilities Grant in the amount of $52,000, correction, $52,899.28, and extend the contract date from August 31st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018, contract number 2018-0612.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Judge. Paul Surio with Sheriff's Office. I'm here today to ask for your approval and authorization on the extension and also the approval of an additional supplemental grant in the amount of $52,889.28. These monies will be used, if awarded, to purchase first responder kits for the department.
Sergeant, could you describe what the kits are comprised of?
Yes, sir. The kits would be the breathing apparatuses, also the cover for the head, and the Tybex suits and other, I think, more level, higher level of suits to go into buildings. No weapons or anything like that, sir.
There's no match required. I move to approve. Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you.
Have a good afternoon.
Item number 16, Health and Social Services. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Area Agency on Aging of the Rio Grande Council of Governments vendor agreement that sets the unit rate for congregate and home-delivered meal services for the county's nutrition program for the period beginning October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019, contract number 2018-0566.
Good morning, County Judge. Commissioners, Irene Valenzuela, Community Services Department, here before you, as I do every year, to request approval for the agreement that formalizes the unit rate for our senior nutrition meal program. The Area Agency on Aging reimburses majorly for the congregate setting, where we serve at every senior nutrition site across the county. They also do reimburse us a little bit for some homebound meal, noontime meals for our homebound clients. This year, we estimate we will be getting a little over $500,000 for our congregate meal and a little over $100,000 for our homebound meal service. This is just to formalize that agreement for the new fiscal year.
Okay. And we're meeting the needs of all those that have requested services, I assume? Okay.
Also, just to clarify, the funding is a little, is $30,000 less than what it was previously?
It is, and it's based on growth projections for this year, and it's only an estimate. AAA does cap our meals reimbursement to $9,200, but through the year, if the older Americans act, increases their funding, they will increase that cap amount, and then we were able to serve a little bit more. Last year, they, in '17 is when they enacted that cap, based on a decrease in funding they got sort of in the middle of our fiscal year, and so they did cap that amount. We held a waiting list. We were able to include everyone on the waiting list by the end of this fiscal year. That cap amount officially is still there from AAA, but they do anticipate, if the funding fluctuates upward to increase that, we'll be able to meet every client that comes in.
Move to approve. Second. Can I second your move?
Yes, Commissioner Stout.
Come on. Let me hear you.
Commissioner Hagerty? Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Item number 17, Human Resources. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Second Exercise of Option to Renew Agreement with Argus Services, correction, Argus Services Corporation for the county's workers' compensation cost containment services from October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019 in the estimated amount of $85,800. Funding is available in ISWC Workers Compensation Administration, contract number 2018-0573.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge. Can I ask if item number 18 can be read into the record as well?
Yes. Item number 18, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Second Exercise of Option to Renew Agreement with Claims Administrative Services for Workers' Compensation Third Party Administration for the county's workers' compensation claims from October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019 in an amount not to exceed $49,125. Funding is available in ISWC Workers Compensation Administration, contract number 2018-0574.
Good morning, again. Sam Surio, Human Resources Department. Both these items right here are our workers' compensation contract. They're for third-party administration, which is CAS, Claims Administrative Services, and our cost containment services, which is handled through an Argus contract. These contracts were for five, excuse me, for three years with two one-year extensions. We're not changing anything within the contract. Alls we're asking is that we extend the contract for one final year, which will be the fifth year, and after this term, then we would need to go out for an RFP.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve both item number 17 and 18?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number 19, approve and authorize the reclassification of one senior trial attorney position with a grade A2 salary and fringe of $92,871 to one principal position with a grade A4 salary and fringe of $126,238. The full impact for this request is $33,367 to the General Fund, General Administration Contingency Personnel. These funds have been budgeted in the fiscal year 19 adopted budget.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. This item truly is being presented to the court for a correction to the record. While you see an impact in the subject line item, please know that there is no impact being requested at this time. And let me give you a little bit of background on this item. This matter occurred with the attorney reclassification that was presented to you all for all three law offices here at the county in late fiscal year 2017. When fiscal year 18 began and the matter was implemented, there was an issue within the District Attorney's Office where nine principal attorney positions should have been granted, but instead, on the record, there were only eight. And so when the District Attorney's Office went to post and hire for the position, there was nowhere to hire this position into, which our system was blocking. They placed the position in a vacant senior trial attorney position, which is the exact same vacancy that was supposed to be regraded to the ninth principal attorney position. Now, this matter was not caught until we started working on some audits in our MUNA system towards the middle and end of fiscal year 18, but when we worked with Budget to identify how did this happen, how was it not caught for a period of quite some time, salary savings were used to offset the correct placement, and so the employee was hired appropriately, was placed where he needed to be. However, there was no slot available to him. It's been corrected with salary savings in the fiscal year 18 year, calendar year, and going into fiscal year 19, those funds were already budgeted since this employee was already earning the correct rate. So it's truly a correction to the record. There is no impact at this time. I have Ms. LaRose here from the District Attorney's Office if the court has questions, and I also and I also have Ms. Elsie West here in the event the court has questions. Um, but again, this was truly errors internally that need to be rectified, and we are working together with Budget on fixing this process.
Commissioners, any questions? I, I met with Ms. Correio last week just to get some context on this because I did have some questions, but it really ends up being just a, a change in title and a reclassification fix. Um, and so I appreciate the diligence in catching the effort, and I'm hoping that we'll continue to make sure that this may not happen again in the future.
Right.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item number twenty, Information Technology. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the maintenance agreement with Kronos Inc. Funding is available in general fund, ITD, Maintenance and Repair Software. Contract number twenty eighteen zero five three six.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, ITD is asking the approval for the renewal of the maintenance agreement with Kronos, uh, timekeeping software. Uh, this is a software that every employee uses to do time in, uh, attendance and also is used to, um, with, uh, Budget and Finance and, uh, HR, auditors and payroll. Uh, we recently upgraded this software, removing the Java requirement, making this web application more responsive and user-friendly. Before, it used to have the Java component, and it would, uh, ask for security questions, and it would kind of frighten our users, and all that has been removed and is now much more easier to use applications. It's all web-based.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners? We want our employees to keep track of their time and to get paid. This might be a wise move for us to approve today. Um, but any questions?
Do some serious savings if we don't do this. Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Item number twenty-one, Public Works. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA Letter of Condition received for loan funding for the Hillcrest First Time Water Service project. If approved, authorize the county judge to sign the necessary documents in compliance with the USDA RD Letter of Condition for the Hillcrest Center Subdivision First Time Water Service Project.
Commissioners, um, if it's okay with all of you, I'd actually like to pull this item into executive session to discuss, uh, potential contract negotiations, uh, moving forward. And so if there's no opposition to that, I'd like for that to, to be the case.
Do we need a memo?
Yes. Good afternoon, County Commissioners, Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. Uh, to move into executive session, you would have to do it pursuant to five-five-one point zero seven-two-five of the Texas Government Code. Once we go into executive session, before we, in open session, but before we go into executive, I'll go ahead and read in, uh, a memo in order for you all to make some particular findings as a result as it pertains to contract negotiations.
Do we need to make a motion to move this into executive?
Do we need to wait for the memo?
Well, I can read it in now if you all want to. I could, or I could wait for that, until that time that we do it. It's up to you. Want me to read it in now?
Sure.
Okay. For item number twenty-one, the, uh, correct provision would be under section five-five-one point zero-two-five of the Texas Government Code. This authorizes the Commissioners Court to conduct a closed meeting to deliberate certain business and financial issues relating to a contract under negotiation if certain conditions are met. The first one being that the Commissioners Court unanimously decides that deliberation in open session would have a detrimental effect on the position of the Commissioners Court in negotiations with a third party, that the attorney, which is myself advising the Commissioners Court, issues a written determination that the deliberation in open would have a detrimental effect. I have done so. I have a memo prepared here that I will provide to Mr. Navas so that he could enter it into the record, and that a tape recording of the proceeding in closed session is made. As your legal advisor have determined that deliberation in open concerning the business and financial issues relating to the USDA's, uh, Letter of Condition and the North American Development Bank loan for funding for the Hillcrest First Time Water Service Project may have a detrimental effect on the position of the court negotiations. Therefore, at this time, I'm requesting that the court unanimously vote that the deliberations in open would have a detrimental effect on the Commissioners Court in negotiations, and that all said deliberations would take place in, uh, enclosed session. I would further request that the Commissioners Court direct the county clerk to ensure that all proceedings in closed session on this matter be recorded.
Uh, make a motion to move this item into executive session.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And you'll take that up at that time, Judge?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-two, Purchasing. Approve and authorize the temporary employment services for the County Elections Department using the Region Nineteen Contract Number One Seven Seven Two Six Six awarded to RM Personnel, Inc. of El Paso, Texas. Purchasing approved on September fourteenth, twenty eighteen. Funding is available in general fund, Elections Expense, Special Revenue Elections Expense, and Special Revenue Elections H-one-nine-one-seven, Contract Services General.
Good morning, Deborah Correjo, County Purchasing Agent. In this case, we're requesting authorization to use an El Paso vendor through the Region Nineteen Contract for, um, temporary services for the election department. Um, if you have any questions about how that's structured, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we're just requesting a yes.
Judge, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Gabby Federal from the Budget and Fiscal Policy Office. Just a correction on one on the last account. The Elections Chapter Nineteen account is now a grant account, so it wouldn't be SR. Um, it's an SG account.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners? And make a motion to approve, uh, with the slight revision from the SR account to the SG account.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-three, with the correction per the Purchasing Department. Approve and authorize the purchase of two-hundred-and-fifty HP desktops for Capital Improvement Project fiscal year eighteen, Technology Modernization Program, using the Department of Information Resources, Contract Number DIRTSO-two-five-three-eight, awarded to SHI Government Solutions, Inc. of Austin, Texas, in the amount of two-hundred-and-five thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Purchasing approved on September fourteenth, twenty eighteen. Funding is available in Capital Improvement Project eighteen, ITD, IT Equipment.
Is it Austin, Texas, or El Paso, Texas?
It's Austin, Texas. Yes, that was a typo on the original that made it through.
Is this on top of the computers that we just bought two weeks ago?
We have an IT representative here that can explain how these fit in.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, this is a separate, um, this is part of the Technology Modernization Program. It's split up into about six segments. We purchased last week, or I believe two weeks ago, we were purchasing MTTs, uh, and laptops. Uh, this, this week, we're talking about desktops.
Okay.
So there's about six different segments that we do as a part of the entire program.
Thank you. Move to approve. Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good afternoon.
Man, we're just flying through the day. Look at us.
Yeah.
You know?
Item number twenty-four, Budget and Finance. Approve Amendment Number Fifty to the County of El Paso's twenty-seventeen through twenty-eighteen operating budget. This budgetary amendment will increase grants by one million eight hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and one dollars, thus increasing the County of El Paso's twenty-seventeen through twenty-eighteen overall operating budget of five-hundred-million-eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and ninety cents to five-hundred-and-two-million-six-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-forty-four dollars and ninety cents.
Gabby Federal from the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. Just a few things I want to point out in this budget amendment before I ask for your approval. Um, regarding a share of transfer that we have in there, the, this transfer is to cover our contractual obligations with UTMB and EHN. Um, these are tr- uh, our funds that were reserved for this purpose, um, during budget hearings for fiscal year eighteen, um, to be used in, in the event that it was needed. Additionally, um, there's a temp pool transfer that is happening for the swimming pools on the backup basis that we're transferring the funds into the sports park operations temp pool, and that should be swimming pools. Um, all the other transfers that are there are to fix some of the end-of-year transfers that need to happen to cover some purchases and some grant, um, setups. Um, I can answer any questions at this time, if the court has any?
Move to approve.
Commissioner Perez?
Um, Gabby, I guess the, it's, it's a minor amount, but, uh, on the district clerk records management, um, the, I guess there's funds being transferred from a personnel item to a operating expense item. Is, that's just to cover, I guess, the purchase that you mentioned?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Is that our question? Any other questions? We have a motion?
We do.
And a second. I'll second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I believe that is it for the regular agenda, and we are gonna now go into executive session.
Can it take a five minute? You wanna go?
Yeah, we could take a quick five minutes.
Commissioners, Court will now recess into executive session to discuss items twenty-five A through twenty-five C and item number twenty-one pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one point zero seven-one, five-five-one point zero eight-seven, and five-five-one point zero seven-two-five.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Road and Bridge Fabin's Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabin Street in Fabin's, Texas 79838. The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas 79835. And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas 79938.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barril started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epecounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The county of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabens Street in Fabens, Texas 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas 79938. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trent Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm To make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the county of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies. Or simply print the card at www.coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the county of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the county of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Item #26, discuss and take appropriate action on the subrogation claim regarding birth at Tofoya, County Attorney's File #019615PC.
Good morning Judge, Commissioners, Jed Untrecker Assistant County Attorney. I would request a motion authorizing the county attorney's office to intervene in this matter as discussed in executive session.
So moved?
Seca.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And item #21 from Public Works, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the United States Department of Agriculture (USDA) letter of condition received for loan funding for the Hillcrest First Time Water Service Project. If approved, authorize the county judge to sign the necessary documents in compliance with the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development Letter of Condition for the Hillcrest Center subdivision first time wastewater service project.
Good morning Judge Commissioners. We're recommending not to accept the proposed offer and conduct an income survey and resubmit that information with the application.
So moved to not accept.
And I believe as part of that motion it would also be to authorize the county judge to send a letter to USDA to leave that application pending?
Include this.
Yes, part of that motion.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that is it for today's agenda, so we're adjourned for today. Have a great week. This concludes today's meeting at 11:58 a.m.